Are they on? Do we need a mic check for these guys, Brock?
Are they on?
Can you hear me?
You can hear me now?
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Are we ready?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Well, welcome to Feed to the Fire. I'm Barbara Venezia. I'm one of the co-creators and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for coming tonight and want to thank the Orange County College staff again, who does a great job here. Feed to the Fire was created in 2010, so we've done quite a few of these over the years. And really Feed to the Fire's main purpose is to let you know who's running for office. It really highlights their personalities and their belief systems, and that's what separates us from a lot of the other forums. It's more of a political talk show discussion. So tonight we'll be talking about the issues and we'll be getting to know the people onstage a little bit better. So why don't we start right now? And I'm going to start by introducing my co-creators of Feed to the Fire. Sitting right next to me is John Canales. He's my boss. And he's also the executive editor of the Los Angeles Times Community News, which produces Times OC and The Daily Pilot. And next to him is our firecracker, Noberto Santana Jr., who's an award-winning investigative reporter and founding publisher of the nonprofit digital newsroom, Voice of OC. I wouldn't be here without these guys. Let's have a round of applause for them. So now let's meet our candidates. On the end is, running for District One to unseat incumbent Diane Dixon, is Mike Glenn. Now, Mike is a former software development company owner. He's lived on the Balboa Peninsula for 14 years, and his previous public service experience, council boards, committee commissions, and volunteering include longtime volunteer with the Newport Harbor Republican Women. He was chair of the Government Relations with Newport Harbor Elks, past VP of Newport Harbor Republican Assembly, he's founder and founding member, founder of Orange County Republican Liberty Caucus. And he's a longtime active alternate member of the Orange County GOP Central Committee. He's also founder and operator of savenewport.com, taxpayer advocate and fiscal watchdog. He's currently leading the fight to save Dog Beach. You might have seen his hats out there. And he's an advocate for defending Prop 13. And most recently, he found a home for Newport Harbor's most recognizable new addition, the floating Palapa Tiki Boat. Let's welcome Mike. And if you want to know more about Mike, you can go to savenewport.com. He also has another website, dumpdixon.com. So we'll get to talk about that in a bit. Sitting next to Mike is Tim Stokes, and he's challenging Mayor Marshall Duffield for the District Three seat. Now, Tim has lived in Newport Beach for 15 years, and he is a close friend of mine and my neighbor. Tim says he believes that we need to restore ethics and transparency to Newport Beach city government and pledges to put principles above personalities, working diligently to restore an inclusive, above-board governing process. Now, his continued community service includes, he's been an airfare member, former committee member of the Environmental Quality Affairs Committee. He worked on battling the impacts of John Wayne Airport for 15 years to reduce noise and pollution. It's one of his top priorities. He's also was on the boards of Santa Ana Heights Redevelopment Agency Project Advisory Committee, the Oasis Senior Center Building Committee, Line in the Sand, Newport Educational Foundation, and he's currently president of the Friends of the Newport Beach Animal Shelter, which is a nonprofit. Tim's website is nbfortim.com. Let's welcome Tim Stokes. Sitting next to Tim is Roy Engelbrecht. And Roy is running in District Four against Kevin Muldoon, who, by the way, is no relationship to Muldoon's restaurant. People ask me that all the time. Roy Engelbrecht is president and CEO of Roy Engelbrecht Promotions, California's third-largest fight promotions company. Roy has been involved with minor league sports for the past 32 years. For over 25 years, he owned and operated Sports Camps of America, the leading broadcasting training school in America with over 2,250 alumni. What I didn't know about you, reading your website, and all this information comes from their websites, from 1975 to 1981, Roy served as director of promotions for the Los Angeles Lakers, Los Angeles Kings, and all forum events. But while he was at the forum, you developed the Laker Girls Dance Team.
Absolutely.
And I thought that was kind of cool.
You guys could loathe me for that.
1980's Lakers championship sports. Roy, you served on the Parks Beaches Rec Commission, and in September 2009, he was included, inducted into the California Boxing Hall of Fame. Roy's been married for 47 years to Nancy, and they reside in Newport Beach. And if you want to know more about Roy, go to his website, joinroy.com. Let's welcome Roy.
Thank you.
And sitting next to Roy is Joy Brenner. She's running against Scott Piattar in District Six. Joy has been a Newport Beach resident for over 40 years, and among the things she has lent her energy to are Parks Beaches and Recreation Committee, Save Our Corona Del Mar Library, UCI, Hope Hospital Foundation, and was the former president of the Corona Del Mar Residents Association. And here's an interesting bit of trivia. She helped found that in 1987 with Councilman then Phil Sansoni. And 31 years later, CDM Residents Association is still going strong. Joy says her strength is building bridges between the community and institutions, and she approaches local politics in that same way. Local government has been her passion, and she believes in representative government is what works best. And if you want to know more about Joy, her website is joyfornewport.com. Welcome, everybody, and thank you for participating tonight. Well, Feed to the Fire, you know, is talking about the fact that it gets the audience to know you, to know your personalities and your belief systems. And there's an interesting dynamic here in Newport Beach politics, which is very different than the dynamic we saw on Monday night for Costa Mesa. So let's talk a little bit about that. There are district elections now for the first time in Costa Mesa where people can only vote within that district. But in Newport, you run in your district, but the entire city votes for you. Let's discuss a little bit about the dynamic of that and if you believe that we should now follow suit with Costa Mesa where you would just vote within that district. Joy, what are your thoughts on that?
When we first started, I believed that district elections was a good idea because we were told that we needed to raise about $120,000 in order to run citywide, and that if it were districts, we'd have to raise about 32. So that seemed like a good incentive right there. But as we've been campaigning, I have gotten all over the city, to every different neighborhood. I'm having the best time getting out there and just finding out what the concerns are with people all over town. And I have to say, I think it's really beneficial that we do have to get out, we have to learn a lot more about the whole city than we would have to learn if we just represented our district and got elected by the people that probably had known us forever.
Well, Roy, what are your thoughts on that? Because I know there have been elections in the past where the person who actually did get elected lost the district, but won citywide.
You know, I looked at this a year and a half ago when I saw Costa Mesa was going to go with districts. Anaheim voted to go districts. And I agree with Joy. It's insane for us in this community to have to spend six figures to win an election that's a council seat. We're not talking about a state senator, so forth. Then I got to thinking about it, and in Costa Mesa and Anaheim, they have villages within their community, I think, that need to be addressed. And so a district election in those communities makes sense for that village in that community. To me, Newport Beach is one village, a very unique village made up of people that love this town and have been here so long, so it wouldn't make any sense. And the other thing, because it's human nature, if we had districts and I'm elected in District Four, well, I really care about District One. I would, but I would be very parochial in my thinking that I have to do the best job. And I don't think that would serve all the residents of Newport Beach, where now the council has to serve all the residents.
Chip, do you have any thoughts on this?
Yes. I want to represent everyone in Newport Beach. That's my goal, is to represent everyone. I think there's enough of a thread that runs through our community, such as, you know, we have this airport that impacts all of Newport Beach, not just District Three, in which I live, and District Four, District One. It impacts all of us. So if we were council members just to represent our district, I wouldn't have other good colleagues, you know, helping me with the fight against the blithe of the airport, or high-density development, or all the other issues that are coming to city as a whole. So that's how I look at it. And, you know, I disagree with Roy a little bit. We're a diverse group of villages. Up in Santa Ana Heights, we're an equestrian area. We keep telling people about that, where do you have horses in Newport Beach? You're supposed to just have boats, or good views of the ocean and stuff. So we were a very diverse group of people, but we all bring something to the table. So that's my spin on the district.
Mike, did you want to weigh in here?
Yeah, absolutely. So this is an issue that I'm actually...
We've talked about this many times, you and I.
I'm really passionate about this. Joyce, right. It costs six figures to run in Newport Beach. That's ridiculous. And we have a campaign limit of $1,100, that's maximum contribution. So you need to get 100 people to give you a maximum donation of $1,000 each in order to be competitive. Now, where do those donations come from? Does anybody know 100 people that are going to give you $1,000 each? Where that money comes from is special interests. And now we have special interests that are funding only the successful candidates, and everybody else gets drowned out. Now, how do we combat that? Well, Joyce is a perfect example. Scott Piattar lost the district last time he ran, but he won citywide. Now, that district knew who they wanted, and they voted for that person because he was in their neighborhood. But to campaign on such a huge level of the entire city, you can't meet that many people. You have to hit them in the mailbox, and that costs money. If you hit them in the mailbox, it costs 75 cents to send with postage and stamps and color printing and everything. So every single time you do that, you're spending tens of thousands of dollars. And the way to combat that is to bring it back locally, bring it back to where the people in their area know their candidates. And if they get a mailer from somebody they don't know, they throw it away. Or they get a bad mailer about the candidate that they do know, they throw it away. They're like, no, I know that person. They're a good human being. It removes a lot of the negativity, and it removes the most fundamental thing, is it removes the buying of our elections.
So you would, I'm sorry, so you would rather we have a system where you can only vote within your district?
Right. And Roy has a, I appreciate Roy looking into this, but I do disagree with him a little bit on the, what I believe the extrapolation of that is people becoming selfish with their district and saying, you know, oh, well, I'm going to spend more in my district to get my votes. If that were the case, we have voting maps. We know where we're elected, district by district. If I were a weak candidate in Area X, then maybe I spend a little bit more, if we're doing it in our current system, to that area, so they like me. But that's not happening in our current system. And because it's not happening in our current system, I can't see why it would happen in the additional, with the district-based voting system.
It seems a little bit like a catch-22, because if you go to a system where only people within their districts can vote, in a way, you can be an advocate just for that area. So you can be Corona Del Mar's representative, and you won't cave to citywide interests or something like that, hypothetically.
I mean, there's a lot of pros and cons to it all, but, you know, you mentioned mailers, and I know Noberto and I have had a lot of conversations about that, because I personally feel that election seasons have changed now. And I'm not sure, you know, we invited all your opponents to be here tonight, and they all refused to come. But Diane Dixon wanted to send her husband, and I explained to her that only candidates running for office qualify to be onstage with us, so that doesn't work. But, you know, so they're not engaging with the public. It's not only our forum that some of them are not showing up to. And so that leads me to believe that their strategy is going to be through the mail. And I wanted to talk a little bit about mail versus grassroots, and have we come full circle now that it's not going to be just all about money and what they can stuff in mailboxes, but it's moving away from the political machine concept? Do you want to tell?
We've had great results lately with the two projects that we work with, Measure Y and the Museum House. It's simply not based on mail anymore. I really think it's the ground game. We're all talking about how we interact with our residents, our neighbors, our friends. That's truly how Newport Beach is being run today. I think they're mistaken that people even will, you know, look at the mail. You take it out of your mailbox, and you go to the green can with most of that. So I truly think proof's in the pudding. We've had two successful resident-driven ground games that have really shown the great numbers. Measure Y was 70% of the vote, and then the defeat of the Museum House with, you know, folks having to lug 10 pounds of paper around. How many of you guys lugged this around with us in front of flashlights and whatnot? They didn't stop us. They didn't stop us with 10 pounds. They made us more engaged and more fired up about how we really want our city to be. So they thought they were doing that. It worked against them. So I'm all for lugging 10 pounds of paper around.
Roy, did you want to weigh in?
And I think that's what's going to make this election very unique. I agree with Scott. There is really a grassroots happening in this city, led by some great organizations, Line in the Sand. Really, they have a vested interest, the love of the city. And you can get 150 mailers in a week, which we got during the primary, but the hard work and the legwork that volunteers are doing, Lines in the Sand will do, will drive home, especially when you have incumbents that are so unpopular. This year is a very unique election because you do have a very unpopular incumbent, and you have a very strong grassroots who are very unhappy with the incumbents. So I think Tim is right. It's people to people.
Well, once, I think, Joy, you motioned that you were going to say something.
I did. I think the difference this year is that our community is more engaged than they have been, and the Museum House petition was a big part of it. That really got, when they had the thugs that tried to intimidate the voters before they would sign the, I talked to one of those guys, and I said, what are you, is this a hire-a-thug business? What is this? And he said, this is, we go all over the place doing this, and this is the nicest we ever are. And so when I spoke to city council about that, I said, you know, you have brought this element into our community. In the past, we would have differing points of view, sitting at tables side by side, talking about our differences, but it has never been like this before. So it's a whole new ballgame in Newport.
I have a follow-up question for you guys, because I hear all of you talking about the importance of grassroots politics, residents-driven, people-to-people sort of politics, and yet when you're asked about district elections, all of you are okay with an at-large system, except for Mike Glenn, that frankly goes exactly the opposite of everything that you just said. An at-large system, and what you have in Newport Beach is kind of like a fake district system. It kind of fools the voters to think that you're representing one district, but you're actually running at large. So I guess my question to you all is, do you get district elections and the real impact of them? And if you do, would you support then just turning Newport Beach elections around to either have them at-large or truly have a district system? Feel free to, any one of you that take that on.
That certainly would be up to the new city council to bring that to the citizens, and that might be a ballot measure if, in fact, the city wants to go district.
Would you support that if you're on the city council?
Absolutely, because it's the will of the people. If that was brought up, and there was really consensus, and City Hall was packed with citizens saying, we have to change the system, I think it's certainly going to be the experiment in Costa Mesa, and we'll see what happens. Two days ago, Costa Mesa, this stage was filled with every candidate. If this would have been a district-wide election in Newport Beach, I bet you those four incumbents would have been here tonight because they would have had to protect their turf, where now they don't have to. So I would be in favor of it.
Got it. But that kind of goes against what you said a minute ago.
Well, it's not me. It's what the people of the city would want.
Well, I'd like to jump in here, too. This, right here on the floor, is an exact representation of what you can do when you can send out enormous amounts of mail. You can treat the citizens like this. This, which I supported, this, not the Museum House, I supported Measure Y. I even spoke against a then-city councilperson at an event against Measure Y. Is anybody happy with the way that the city council is treating their city right now? Because that's what mailing campaigns gets you. District-based elections, when people know their neighbors, when their neighbors know them, eliminates this kind of shenanigans. I absolutely, I've been an advocate for it for at least five years now. We've got a situation right now where we have, of the people, for instance, my opponent moved here six months before she filed to run for office, from LA. We had the same thing with Piattar. Moved in, I believe it was roughly the same amount of time. Muldoon moved in about a year before. We've got these candidates that just show up, send out massive amounts of mail, and unfortunately, thank you guys so much for being here, by the way. I really appreciate everybody here for wanting to know about our city. We get these candidates, and most people, unfortunately, are not like our audience. They look at the mail, and they say, oh, that's a terrible mailer about candidate X. I'm not going to vote for them. Or, wow, that's a really beautiful picture with a sailboat. I'll vote for them. And that's the bulk of the electorate, unfortunately. That's the reality that we live in. But again, if we brought this back to the district-based elections, you know your neighbor. Yeah, they've been here X amount of years. They're a good person. Or maybe they're a bad person. We don't want to elect them. You know them.
Well, Mike, you know, you bring up the people who just move here, you know, we call them carpetbaggers. What do you say to your critics who've said, well, you keep on moving to different districts to run?
I have had a place on both Balboa Peninsula and Balboa Island for many years now. As you saw in my campaign two years ago, I ran on the exact same platform. The incumbents are doing terrible things, and I want them out. So I took my Balboa Island house, and I used that as my residence. But it is, I have, I live both places. And it's not like I'm, you know, live in Los Angeles, or what was the guy that was up here for the airport guy that flew down for every council meeting, but he really lived up somewhere else. I live across the bay from each house.
Tim, Joy, I'd be curious to hear where you're at on that. District elections and the inconsistency of your original statement to where the discussion is now.
It's either one. It's, as I said, I started out thinking district was better. I have enjoyed the process of getting to know more about the entire city, but I'm not married to either position. If it's district-wide, I run. I know my neighbors. I've been there 57 years. But if it's citywide...
But you don't see a clear distinction between or a clear benefit for one or the other? Because it sounds, frankly, wishy-washy.
Yeah, yeah.
You both are saying the same thing. Whatever the voters say, I'll do.
Yeah.
But I don't have an opinion.
I have an opinion. I really honestly think that if you didn't have district elections, and, you know, the unintended consequences of that was the more affluent areas. I think Costa Mesa is a great example of where one area got represented by all their council people. It needed to be diverse amongst the city. I think with having districts and you represent the district, it is an artificial sort of thing. I agree with you. But if you didn't have that, then everyone that could afford $120,000 out of their pocket would just run an election and win that election.
Yeah, but you could just have real district elections, actually have them be true, in a sense of, you have a system similar to Santa Ana, where, again, it's kind of like, frankly, a fraud on the voters. You're running in a semblance of a district, right?
Right.
But it is actually at-large. So you're kind of telling the public, hey, I'm your district representative. But in reality, you're all at-large seats, no?
I think that even, so I will represent Corona Del Mar. I know Corona Del Mar. I've been there 57 years. But I have to vote on things that affect our entire city. So through this process, I am learning a lot more about the things that I have to take a stand on. So I could just get elected for my district and then learn on the job, but I think it's better that I'm actually going out. And besides, I know what their concerns are, so that I can actually address them, be educated on them, and talk about them.
John, you want to jump in here?
Oh, you know, we were going to change subjects.
Unless you... You know, we've noticed, Barbara and I were just talking, how, you know, in past years, Newport Beach has always been kind of known as a sort of a diplomatic place to run for office, you know? But then in recent years, people have taken the gloves off, and the fighting has gotten more intense, and, you know, and the Facebook threads are just sort of, you know, brutal. What do you think is going on here? I mean, has the environment changed? Is it for the better? Because in some, some people would say, well, we're talking about all this expensive mail, and then Facebook is free, but it can be pretty brutal. Is it better to have these sort of democratic sort of arguments in a place where anyone can say whatever they want?
Newport Beach is a very polite community. And it should be. That's where I want to live, is in a polite and respectful community from that perspective. It's good to get a handwritten thank-you note for a contribution rather than just this email that comes out of a driven platform. That's part of my campaign, is make sure that everyone's thanked individually for their contribution to my campaign. I think it's because Newport is unique in that fashion, John. We expect better. We have an aspirational city. We're world-class. That's what I think of Newport Beach as world-class, and our politics should be the same thing.
But the behavior, Tim, is certainly not world-class from where I'm sitting. I mean, I had to write about Bobby McCaffrey, who supports Team Newport, that wrote about, you know, women in the community and mentioned Joy and compared her to a Pavlovian grueling dog. I was appalled at that, that that is the level that politics in Newport has come down to. And, you know, Joy, you're a grandmother. What do you say to your grandchildren when this has gotten to this really unpleasant level?
I had that conversation with my family before I decided to run. I sat all of them down. I have a daughter on one side of the bay, a daughter on the other side. I've got five grandchildren altogether in local schools. And I sat them down, and I said, this is going to get nasty, because we know Dave Ellis is the campaign consultant for all of Team Newport, and his history is that he has despicable mails that go out that disparage the character. So I said to them, it's just like bullying for kids. I said, this is political bullying, and we can either know who we are and stand up to them and just accept that they're going to say whatever they say, but we were solid in knowing who we are and what we stand for. And I asked them, I said, are you willing to do this? And they all said yes. Of course, it's just starting to hit now, and now they'll see what they really said yes to. But the other thing was, when we were looking for a candidate to run in my district, I had no intention of running. And a lot of us were looking, and everybody was afraid to run against Dave Ellis and the political machine. And that's crazy.
Well, you know, we just did the Costa Mesa on Monday, and we were talking about how many women were on, were running for office, and we don't see that in Newport. And how every race has a different dynamic. I mean, you're running against a man, Scott Piattar, who, whose behavior has been questionable. Mike, you're running against Diane Dixon. That makes it a little bit different in this day and age, you know, of what you can say and what you can't say and what's politically correct. You guys are running against men, so it's kind of an equal dogfight. But Mike, I mean, you posted Diane Dixon's home address on Facebook, which a lot of people thought was questionable.
My home address is 111 East Edgewater Avenue. I think that if you're going to have a representative, you should know where they are in your community. I don't see any, now, this, now, I want to get really specific here. When Diane Dixon doesn't want to hear what you have to say, she won't return phone calls, won't return texts, won't return emails, ignores people that come up to the dais, and then gets nasty, like for me, for instance, she ordered, and there's a voicemail you can find, of her ordering a taxpayer-funded position, the city clerk, to investigate me. On the voicemail, it says, I want you to find this dirt on Mike, if you can find any, because I want to use it against him during the next trolley meeting, because it's my understanding that he's going to be speaking against the trolley. Had nothing to do with the trolley. They couldn't find any dirt, so she just fabricated something from the dais. I asked her to retract it. She refused. I demanded she retract it. She refused. I sent a demand letter for $1 in apology, because I knew where this was going. I sued the city of Newport Beach. The judge finally ruled, yes, I never owed any money, which is what she was claiming, and that I never could have owed money. Now, those are the types of dirty politics that really get into the city. And when you have somebody that is refusing to listen to the people, I see no problem protesting outside of their house.
Roy, what did you want to say?
Without a doubt, the complexion of politics in Newport Beach changed four years ago with this election. We didn't have Jean Watt, Evelyn Hart. We didn't have people, and we had a district that had one person. That should be outlawed, no one should run unopposed in this city. We had another candidate who didn't want to run, and they did a fundraiser on Balboa Island and decided to have him, have him run. I kind of use the example of marriage, when you look at what has happened four years ago and what's happened the last four years. We all that have been in this community a long time are married to this community for a long time, and when you're married to something, you love that person, you're married. But when you have a city council candidate, or city council person, who has lived in this community nine months, one month, one year, they don't have that love that you have for a community or a marriage. And subsequently, they can be manipulated, they can be sold, they can be bought, and the decisions they make are not for the love of their community, but for their special interests or their, or it's very self-serving. And that's what happened four years ago, and thank goodness, we have some outstanding candidates on this stage that are saying enough is enough. We're going to change that.
You know, we're talking about the nasty business of politics in Newport Beach. And Joy, you are delightful. People say that all the time, I say that to you all the time. Roy, I've known you for a long time, you're just an easygoing, nice guy. Tim, he's just kind of easygoing and nice. Mike, you're a little fiery. But I can't see you three really getting down in the dirt and nasty. And I think people, the feeling I'm getting is that the people in this city are getting very tired and weary of the nastiness.
This is a, this is a really great election for us four. Because typically, you're one or the other. You're either an incumbent, or you're running for an open seat, or you're challenger. The incumbent, running against an incumbent is really easy, because they have a record that you could, like thedumpdixon.com, I've got her voting record, there's nothing personal on there, it's what she voted for. And you allow people to see their history. What have they done in this community? Or what have they done to this community? That's something that's very easy to run on, is you're running against their record. When you're running for an open seat, things get, I was happy to run a very clean campaign against Jeff, but you know, everybody makes the same promises. Oh, we're going to lower taxes, we're going to spend better. But when you, when you have an opportunity, and you have somebody that has a four-year history of a voting record to look at, you can run a very clean, effective campaign without getting down in the dumps.
I think we should start talking about some of the issues, and one thing I'm just curious about is, if each of you were elected, what would be the sort of first project you'd sink your teeth into? Might as well go ahead first.
Joyce, start.
As far as I'm concerned, we have got to really make our city transparent. We have gotten so far into the dark shadows with our government, so many things happened that we have no idea about. And they're bringing things right to the council to make the decision, instead of having it vetted through the process of our boards, our commissions, where the community gets involved. They understand the issue by the time it gets to the council, but when they spring it on us, like the Port versus the Harbor Plan, when they spring it on us, all of a sudden, at the council level, then the community doesn't have time to really weigh in. And we've got to make everything that is in the public conversation, part of the public conversation. That's my first.
So improve the website, so that, so that people can see what's coming down the pike? Or what specifically do you mean?
My, my specific thing is that we've got to empower our boards and commissions, and we have to make sure, like, I want to look at what the process they used was in order to gather information from the community. Don't just tell me, well, we had a meeting, and, you know, 12 people showed up, and so we've got public input. That's not good enough. You need to show us what you did to really get the community aware and involved.
So would you support, for example, one of the things under state law, you have three days before a meeting to put agendas out?
Yes.
Would you support then extending that, under a local ordinance, to five days? A week before an issue is out?
It seems like a, it seems like a good idea.
What would you guys, or what do the rest of you think?
I absolutely support that. In fact, I think we should kick it out a lot further, 30 days. Give people the chance to vet these things. We're not a brand-new city that's trying to build all these things to become a city. We're built, we're good. The city council position shouldn't be build, 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 all these great new things and slap my name on it in a brass plaque. It's a janitorial position. We're a great city right now. We just need to stay on track.
Now, Roy, what would be the first thing that you would do when you got in there? What's your big issue for, as soon as you get in?
It is easy, because my slogan at joinroy.com is keep Newport Beach great. And I think we're in a real situation where if we don't address development in this community, and out-of-control development, and not being, not adhering to the general plan, it's very easy for the city to become an urban city, and then we're not going to be great anymore. And I couldn't believe it, I was at Union Bank, is my bank, yesterday, talking to one of the managers, and I just had, he said, what are you doing this weekend? I said, well, I've got to go to a forum, I'm running for city council. And he said, well, I live in Corona del Mar. Boy, you've got to do something about the development there. He said, I don't call Corona del Mar that anymore, I call it Construction Del Mar. And I said, I'm going to use that, because that, here's just a resident of our city, now it's Construction Del Mar. And that's one of the first things, John, would really look at, our general plan, updating it immediately, because we're losing views. And I've said this to those that have been to the other forum, we have billion-dollar views in this city, and we're putting in buildings that take away that billion-dollar view, and once that view is gone, it's gone forever because of that building. And subsequently, we become a good city. I want this to continue to be a great city. It has to start with controlling development, make sure it does not go out of control. I'm all for property rights, but you know what? Keep Newport Beach great.
Tim, what would be the issue?
Good question. The one thing that's concerned me in the past is, you know, we had a council majority that asked our, forced our city manager to retire. Dave brought a lot of great asset things to, as a city manager, as an assistant city manager, he had a lot of institutional knowledge. The one thing that really concerned me about Dave leaving early is the institutional knowledge he has. How do we pass that on? As a businessperson, when we hire very senior people, you have things called succession plans, how to keep the continuity of business going, so where your second-tier level employees and the third-year level employees have that continuity. They're not wondering, am I going to have a job next week? Is somebody coming here and, and just get rid of all of us, sort of thing? So that stops the service. So that was the one thing that really concerned me. Now that we have Grace, from all the accounts, I've met her a couple times, read articles about her, I think she's a strong person, but she's a different person than what Dave was. So that concerns me most. How do we stabilize our business side of Newport Beach, to make sure that we do have enough surplus in the budget, that, that, that things aren't just lost in the cracks, that the things that are proposed to spend, that they're appropriate things to spend on, not just, you know, now we get things thrown in the corners and we have to guess at this thing. We lost a great resource, we lost a really great resource, and we could have done better with that transition of Dave. He was willing to stay until April 2019. I would have been appropriate to have a manager, you know, after the election, and we could have easily transitioned that new position with Dave being there. It would have been a great marriage. As, as he goes out, then a new manager comes in. I think we, as a city, we got short, shorted that opportunity. It was really a bad issue.
You bring up something that I've been thinking about. Grace is very nice, I've interviewed her, she's the new city manager, but she has no institutional knowledge.
Right. We're struggling, you know, she's, she's never really taken care of the airport issues, she's been in a city that's been pro-billed, I mean, that's what Irvine was based on, it's a, it's a pro-billed city. That's why Irvine got, is what it is. Is she going to bring that same mentality to Newport Beach? That's one thing we have to be concerned about. Where is her focus? She's got a great financial background, if you look at her resume, she's got a great financial. We need that sort of thing in our cities, so we can find all those synergies. We got to, we got to stop, we've got a spending problem, as Joyce says, you know, we've got a spending, we don't have really a revenue problem, we've got a spending problem. Is she going to be the person that champions that efficiencies in our city government? Where can we find the extra money to pay for lifeguard stations?
I just have a quick question, you just reminded me of something about the airport, which I'm curious what your take is on it. I've never seen so many small planes and helicopters coming down on your neighborhoods. And I'm curious, you guys live here, I don't, is that a new thing for you? And what do you think the city should be doing, vis-à-vis John Wayne Airport, to ask some questions about maintenance of smaller operators? Just why do you have so many planes coming down your neighborhoods?
Well, so, the, first, the city council is, they're pretending to do stuff that they're simply not. They're taking vacations to ZC, saying they're talking about the airport. But in the last four years, we have had an increase in the loud threshold of decibels for planes, we've had an increase in the total number of flights, we've completely removed essentially the restriction for small craft. We've, and we've seen flight patterns expand to where they weren't before. So somebody that bought a home intentionally not under the flights, now has flights flying over their homes. Now, what we need to do is actually engage with the FAA. We've, again, we've got people flying back and forth. Now, our citizens have been doing a great job at this. In fact, our citizens have been doing the bulk of the work. But our city council needs to step up and really have their backs on this. Because again, in the last four years, we failed on the only three things. The frequency of flights, the patterns of flights, and the volume of flights. We've gone backwards on all of those.
Yeah, but you're not addressing what Niberto's saying. You know, I hear, the airfare groups, and everybody is talking about pollution and noise and everything else, but I know, I've lived here since 1992, and I would say in the last year, I have never seen so many small aircraft helicopters fall out of the sky. And, and as a resident, especially living in Santa Ana Heights, I'm very concerned that, that somebody is not paying attention at this airport to maintenance records and the like, because it seems to go back to that, when we've had these accidents, and the helicopter went down, what, in October, right around the corner from where I live.
Of airplanes falling on Balboa Island. But Tim, among the four of us, Tim is the most versatile in this, the work that has been done on this and the work that's going on with the city. I, I would be interested in what you have to say.
But Tim, is anybody really looking at why these things are falling out of the sky? I mean, you had a plane land on the 405, over on the 55.
Yeah, the answer is no, and the county is who runs the airport. So they, they have the ultimate responsibility for...
Right, but this is happening in Newport, in Newport Beach.
Agree. You know, we've, we've been trying to solve the bigger issues, you know, keep the curfew, the number of million annual passengers down. That's what everyone's saying, is that as we, we kept the settlement agreement, the 2015 revised agreement, we kept the curfew. We don't want to have a 24-hour airport. I think that was a critical mass to keep that. We, we did schedule additional, a million annual passengers in the, in the agreement, that was done. I think what we do now is, as Mike was saying, the things, the perceived perception of where planes are going, you know, with the, with the different flight patterns. I know that we're working on something currently, that we're, we're trying to do the higher, earlier pattern, the old e-ticket, you know, where we flew out with the MD80s, you got up higher, and you dispersed the pollution at a higher level, and you took the, basically the, the noise at a higher level. So it didn't seem as much...
Does the conversation now, from this city council, and if you're elected, should we not be looking at private aviation and what's going on there? Because that's what's falling out of the sky.
Well, general aviation is not in the settlement agreement. So yeah, we start, we start the conversation with the county again. Maybe that's the new issue, is that we have more responsibility with the general aviation. Commercial aviation is what the settlement agreement about. General aviation isn't. That's why you see them flying all over everywhere, and then, you know, and landing on the 55 freeway, the 405 freeway, and then the helicopter. We had one land in the, in the Back Bay, what, five, six, seven, eight years ago.
I'd like to add that my opponent, Scott Piattar, was on the Irvine Planning Commission for eight years, when we were trying to get the airport moved to El Toro, and they were working against us. And his brother was also one of the biggest proponents, trying to keep the airport from moving to El Toro. So for him to say that he's got any concern at all about the airport in Newport Beach is really disingenuous.
No, another issue that we talked about with Costa Mesa the other day, which we don't really talk about a lot in Newport, is the issue of homelessness. And one of the things that Niberto brought up is how now, I mean, the judge is making every city participate and reach across the borders. Newport Beach is generally never really that open to reaching to Costa Mesa, to reaching to Irvine, and working with other city councils to deal with the homelessness, the traffic. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the homelessness issue and where, because we're going to have to participate. The idea that we can't participate anymore is gone. So what are your thoughts, Roy, about the homelessness issue?
Well, it's interesting, I was with Dave Kiff today at 2:00 on a homeless meeting, because I had some thoughts on, on addressing the homeless situation. We have presently, the Board of Supervisors in our community, in, in San Ana, have $55 million that they have that's just sitting there, to in fact, to be used for the homeless and mentally ill, homeless and so forth. And we have the state ready to give more money to build 2,000 rooms for homeless, which cannot be done on that. They're called homeless for one reason, they do not have, they're homeless. So to try to put the homeless into hotels, that's not a home. To try to put them in shelters, that's not a home. I think there really needs to be an effort to try to be a little more creative with the homeless problem. Dave thinks, they've counted, there's about 4,200 in Orange County, we think it's more like 6, 6,000. I think we need to look towards placing homeless people in homes of people who want to provide a home. We do this with Forster, we do this with Forster kids. We have, we have Forster homes, where in fact, this county pays a family to take in a Forster youngster. Well, I looked at that and said, is there, could that program work for certain homeless people who want to have a home? We have homeless who have mental problems, drug problems, crime problems, but there are some genuine people out there who are homeless due to unfortunate circumstances, who would love to have a home.
So it's kind of a foster care program?
It is a foster care, but with...
For families, and you see that working in Newport Beach?
I see it working countywide, if there's a program that's developed on that. Because then you get into, well, Roy, is that kind of like a sober living home type thing? Which is not very good. We have a tremendous homeless problem. Let's at least have these ideas, let's bring these ideas out. I'm not saying my, this idea is, is going to be the bomb that's going to solve it, but boy, we're doing nothing now except let's build 40 rooms for 6,000 homeless people. Let's spend all that money to build it, then you have to have security, you have to clean it, you have to maintain it, you have utilities. It doesn't make sense. So is there something better? We have Forster homes? Hey, we have pet adoption, we have things, you want to adopt a pet? You know, I mean, we have homeless. If we could get 20% of the homeless placed, that's 20% out there.
Well, at least you're thinking out of the box.
Got to do it.
What do you think, Tim? Should Newport Beach do its fair share, help relieve some of the burden that's in Costa Mesa?
I think the definition is what fair share means. I think there's a, there's currently about 2,500 units that are existing, we're, there's 2,700 neat units that come on. These are not my estimates, it's just, you know, great, read Niberto's column in OC, Voice of OC, you find a lot of information. The trust is now trying to find out where those best locations go. One in Anaheim, there's a proposal for Costa Mesa, the mental health facility, and then the, the great park, or the marine base, where they left the facilities to where we can remodel those types of things. Newport Beach doesn't have to actually house people, but it can do something to supplement the system. It's, as I understand homeless, it's not just about housing people, it's their continual care. It's the, it's the, getting them stabilized, then continue to employ them, and then get them on the path to not being homeless. Homeless doesn't mean just homeless, it means there's a whole lifestyle that needs to change. So Newport Beach could be one of those folks that, you know, and this is just free thing, you know, we may employ those, those folks to do some of our things that don't get done, clean up the beaches, those types of things. You know, I just think, we can afford not to, in our situation, we don't have to house them, but we have to supplement those other, other issues that come along with homeless. That's how I...
Go ahead, Roy.
Here is the problem. If we build 1,000 rooms in this county for the homeless, our homeless situation will double or triple, because everyone in the inland empire, Los Angeles, the valley, will come to Orange come to Orange County because, hey, we got 1,000 rooms that, we feed them, we house them, there's blankets. So just building 2,000 homes, a 2,000 rooms venue, which is three or four years away, so the homeless situation is going to go up and up, is, to me, is not a solution at all.
Mike, you wanted to say something about the homeless issue, since everyone's kind of thinking out of the box here.
Yeah, it's, you know what happens when you leave cat food out? You get a cat, whether or not you had one before. So we have, and I mentioned this in other forums, we've got a trolley service down on the peninsula where homelessness is rampant. And it really started kicking up a notch when we developed this free service. It's essentially, you can go on, you can take a whiff of the fragrance on the trolley. It is a mobile air conditioning unit that is free to ride, and we, it attracts a certain type of person. We, we, there is a question about where to put these people in this position. I don't know of any neighborhood that says, "I would like to have a homeless shelter here." We have an area down by the airport that I think that we could make some room at that's not near any residential areas. But I think that we also need to be looking at not leaving the cat food out. If we are looking to attract people that are, that are homeless, there are certain things that we can do, and there are certain things that we cannot do. And we're, we're making decisions right now that are attracting more, and we're not providing them with any other true alternative, like building them somewhere, somewhere that they can locate, that is not near residential areas. And I think that we can look at that, a lot of they land out by the airport, again, it's not residential, it's not near anything. And, and I think that it's near enough services that we can get them the proper help, it's got roads that are frequented, but it's not near residential communities, which I think is, one of the keys, is keeping focus on these people and allowing them to really thrive in the environment that they are presented with and in the unfortunate circumstances that they're in.
So I'm not hearing anyone saying they're willing to house any homeless in Newport What kind of message do you think that sends to your neighbors? I mean, Costa Mesa's like, we're committing to 50 beds, we'll do it right now, and you're admitting that...
They hired social workers.
And you admit that you have homeless on the peninsula quite a bit. So why not just also match those beds that your neighbors are?
Well, I think there's, I think there's something that we're not talking about, which is the services that we're providing for the homeless. And I think Tony Yim with our police department is doing a fabulous job, and he's actually getting to know the homeless in our community, and he's figuring out with social workers' help, what they can do, what they're capable, what kind of service do they really need to be reincorporated into society. And I think expanding our services in that way is a really helpful thing that we can do in our community. We've also, we have developed some homeless...
Your answer to homelessness is to hire more police?
No, 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 to have more services.
Officer Tony is a police officer who introduces them to social services. It seems like that's almost a problem across Orange County, that most politicians hire more police.
We're saving...
With this fantasy that this police officer somehow to wave a magic wand over people and solve really complicated problems. I just want to push back on you a little bit in that sense. I think it's much more complex, or do you see it as the traditional aspect of hire another police officer?
No, I don't, we're not just hiring any police officer, we're hiring police officers that have a special...
Officer Tony.
...expertise in dealing with the homeless, and so that they can be addressed in a humane way, so that, because I just watched that movie, The City...
Police officer's supposed to do, he's only a police officer. I mean, they're not like magical...
But he's got, he's got social workers that he's working with that help him...
So the social worker's actually doing the job. Officer Tony is just sitting there with the schizophrenic, crisscross applesauce until a social worker shows up.
Well, he gets to know them, and he helps to figure out what kind of services they need.
And a police officer is the best person to get to know somebody with serious issues?
I, I, I agree where both of you guys are coming from. I, I think that the work that Tony is doing is fantastic, but he does not need, we don't need a police officer to do that work. As you were saying, Nuberto, this is something, this is a social workers field. We've got positions, we have, we have officers that are fully pledged police officers answering phones. We have, our, our dog catcher's making 180K a year, is a police officer. They're going to retire with 90% of their base pay for the rest of their life. We have Tony Yim. Again, these people are, they're not doing bad jobs, but they don't need to be police officers.
Well, but like in Costa Mesa, they have hired social workers.
Yes, yes.
Should Newport Beach be doing that?
I'd like to go back to John's original question, why isn't Newport Beach feel like we need to do our fair share or perceived perception of fair share? I think as Orange County, we all do different things. Say, for instance, we're, we're at the, as a flushing point of all of the rivers, all of our bays and stuff, we have to take care of the trash from Irvine, San Ana, upstream people. So that's one blight that Newport Beach takes, right, that other cities don't. We also get this great thing called John Wayne Airport that flies over our, that other people in the county use. So I think it's kind of an unfair characterization to say that Newport Beach doesn't do its fair share of some of the blight in our area, if you're calling homeless blight. So other areas maybe take that issue for Newport Beach. We take, we take a little pain with, you know, floating trash down in, into our harbor, airport noise, other communities may have, may be burdened with the, the housing of homeless. That, that's, that's called an equalization of equity, as I see it, from, from our, our county as a whole. It's a county issue, right? It's not just Newport Beach that has homeless.
Right, I mean, that's, I'm not trying to take a position here, but I'm, I'm saying your neighbors, I mean, Laguna Beach has a police officer who's highly trained in social work and dealing with the homeless, and, but Laguna Beach, which also has high incomes and high property values, also has a shelter. And so I would think if I were Laguna Beach, if I were Costa Mesa, I'd look at my neighbor in Newport and say, "Hey, why don't you take some?" And what would, you know, because they're going to ask you to at some point. And so that, that's kind of what I was asking.
And then, John, we ask them, can, can the flight pattern go over your house too? You know, it, it, it all works out in the end, right?
Can I change tracks here for a moment? Measure T. Let's talk about that for a moment, because voters will be have to voting on that. And so why don't we talk, chat a little bit about that? Joy, give me a, a little bit about Measure T and why you're for it or against it?
Well, I'm, I'm against it because it was a, it was a fictitious ploy by the current council in order to bring outside money in to the community to support them, because there would be PACs that are taxpayer organizations that will come in. As far as what it's actually doing, we can probably live with it. What they came up with was $50 million, and, and there's a cost of living increase, and, I mean, it's not something that will destroy us if we have to live with it, but the reason they did it was in order to benefit themselves and bring outside money into our election cycle.
So am I understanding this correctly, that the measure itself, they're calling it a taxpayer protection, so that the city council, whoever those folks are...
Yeah.
...can't just spend money willy-nilly?
It's whether we can incur debt, that's the, the point. And that they say in order to incur debt over $50 million, that we need to go to a vote of the people for that. The problem with that is if you're getting competitive bids, by the time you've organized an election, gone to the people, those competitive bids have expired, for one thing. And especially if you're dealing with a tsunami or an earthquake or something like that, it's like you are dealing with things that you're putting... The interesting is, they don't care about putting anything to the people now, but they're talking about, maybe in 20 years, we'll let those people vote on something. Whereas right now, they just push everything through regardless of what the people think. So it's, it's just a disingenuous argument.
Here's, here's another problem. We, you know, as we have different, as I said, diversity of our, our community, we have harbor issues and stuff, what if, what if, what if we need to do seawall expansion that costs greater than the $50 million? Well, people up in Newport Coast, you know, how are you going to get them to vote for seawalls? It doesn't benefit them. So I think it's a structural problem when, when you, when you create more government. Guys that didn't want to create more government are simply creating more government. If you elect city council people, you elect them for a reason, because you actually trust them. We made a mistake with Team Newport, we just did. We were asleep at the wheel. But I think when you actually get your city to work, you're, engage your community, you don't get those issues. It's simply that. I, I think it's, I think it's, it's a huge problem. I agree, it's, it's going to pass, it's taxpayer protection, it's got a fancy title, folks, folks don't want more taxes, that sort of thing. But it structurally makes a problem for the city of Newport Beach. And as I understand it, no, no other city in, in, in the United States has something like this. So we're going to stand out that way too. Unintended consequences or something.
Mike, did you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I'm going to respectfully disagree. The, while I agree that this was intentionally timed for the people up there to benefit personally by saying that they're sponsors, there is no other time that we can vote on a charter amendment. If this was going to be passed, it has to be in a general election. City of Bell, any general, any, any charter amendments must be passed during a general election. So they couldn't do this in January. It has to be at a general election. So was it a, what is it, a publicity stunt? Is this trying to bring outside money in? Absolutely. Now, but I, I am going to vote yes on this, and, and I'm not entirely happy about it. This has a $50 million limit of things. There are provisions for earthquakes and things like that, any, any emergencies, we can ignore it. But this is for something like building a new fire station, or building a seawall. These are things that we don't wake up the next day and say, "Oh, I think we should build a seawall that's going to cost $75 million." These are things that, over time, if we, if we, if, if we as Newport Beach don't have the money to maintain our seawalls right now, then we're in a bigger problem than we're willing to admit. We see these things coming up for years and years and years and years and years in advance. We, I think that this limit should be basically zero. There's no reason why we would need to wake up one morning and need to borrow $50 million or more and bring it to the taxpayer, bring it to the voters. If we can't afford it, then we should save for it, and if we can't afford it while we're saving for it, then maybe we should reevaluate the project.
Well, you know, I kind of agree with Joy on this whole Measure T thing, because they're asking now the voting population to weigh in on all these major projects. Meanwhile, over the last four years, they haven't really cared one way or another what the people wanted, and I, I've seen, I've seen the petition, okay? Then there was the, almost getting rid of Scott Piattar through the recall. And I seem to think that when you have so many people in a city suing their city over decisions, and you have referendum, and you have recall, that's a red flag that the people who are sitting on city council are not listening to the people who elected them.
I mentioned they need subpoena power to limit our, our people that are actually engaging in this city to have subpoena power against them. Why would a council need subpoena power? You have a district attorney to take care of those issues.
We have two measures that are polar opposites, four years apart. Measure Y was a legitimate measure because the city and the council were trying, especially the city, were trying to position a measure that didn't make any sense, and the residents of Newport Beach saw through that, and overwhelmingly, even though I was, it wouldn't be because of me, though I was the only one that said no on Y, everybody else said yes, and it was roundly defeated. Now we go fast forward to Measure C, which is just hip pocket politics at its worst. They're doing it, yes. Should we have some safeguards in there for funding over $50 million? Absolutely. But this is for guys, the council taking credit for it, it could, it didn't have to happen. It's hip pocket politics at its worst.
Well, we're out of time. We could be talking for, for hours. There are so many things we can talk about in Newport Beach. I want to thank you all for engaging in the process.